The October 3, 2024 Planning Commission session is called to order. First call of business, roll call please.
Sure thing. Pearson is absent. Willenburn?
Here.
Campbell, absent. Stalarsky?
Here.
McCauley?
Here.
Diata?
Here.
Hagan is absent.
I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And could I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Next matter of business, approval of the minutes from July 11th. August haven't been submitted yet. Could I get a motion, or are there any changes you want to be made?
I have no changes.
No changes. I will make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed. Onto the next portion tonight, as every night we open up a open forum if we have any comments you would like to make that are not related to anything on the agenda. Now is your time to do so. If you have any, we'd like you to limit your comments to about two minutes. And I will go ahead and open the forum. Seeing nobody, I'm going ahead and close the open forum session of the meeting. And on to old business, we have none, so we'll move on to our new business. This will be a public hearing for the Kenneth Kroger conditional use permit for an oversized garage. Go ahead, Max.
Yep. Thank you and good evening. And tonight before us, we have a request for an oversized garage located at 6063 Stillwater Boulevard North. This is located just east of the intersection of Highway 120 and Stillwater Boulevard. The zoning here is R1, or very low-density housing, where oversized garages are allowed if a conditional use permit is obtained. The purpose here is the applicant is looking to add a new detached garage that exceeds the maximum square footage requirement for garages in the R1 district. Per the city code, garages may be up to 1,000 square feet in the R1 district, whereas the applicant's garage here is planned to be 1,200 square feet. The property as a whole is approximately 0.9 acres in size and contains a single-family home with an existing detached garage. The proposed new garage would replace the old garage, which the applicant has stated is in poor condition. Here we have the site plan for the applicant's plans to add a garage. The applicant plans to use the garage and has stated for modern vehicles, which currently can't fit in the pre-existing garage, as well as snow blowers, lawn mowers, other residential items. As you can see, the garage would be located in the rear yard on the south side of the property. The applicant has stated that the garage would not exceed height limits. Additionally, in the R1 district, where this property is located, garages are required to be at least 10 feet from side property lines and 30 feet from rear property lines. Based on the provided site plan details, these setback requirements are met. As a reminder, conditional use permits are subject to certain review criteria found in the city's ordinance. Here's a summary of the review criteria we must use in evaluating it. Compliance with the comp plan, compatibility of use with zoning, no nuisance effects generated, no traffic congestion or parking issues, the use must be adequately served by public services, no excessive cost for public services, minimal impacts to the environment, and specifically for oversized garages. The lot can't be further subdivided with the building on site, no pull bar and building construction is permitted, no door can exceed 10 feet in height, and no commercial or industrial uses can occur within the structure. Staff finds that the conditional use permit review criteria of the ordinance has been satisfied, as detailed on the staff report in file. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the following conditions: the applicant shall obtain a building permit, the structure shall meet setback and height requirements, and the garage shall not exceed 1,200 square feet in size. As a reminder, this is a public hearing, and the applicant is here with us in attendance. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this request.
I don't have any questions.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Any comments from the public on this conditional use permit?
Mr. Vice Chair, could we open the public?
Open the public comments section for this ordinance? I mean, variance? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comments section. Is there any other discussion?
No, I don't have any discussion on this project.
Could I get a motion then?
I will make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for an additional garage at 6063 Stillwater Boulevard North.
Second.
It's been seconded, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Onto our next portion here for the Enclave Companies Plan Unit Development Amendment.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners. So before us tonight is a request for a new residential development titled Enclave Helmo Station, located at the Helmo Station PUD, at the addresses 7600, 7750, 7700, 7655, and 7701 Third Street North. Generally, these addresses are located, as you can see in the map, in the vacant land between Norhart Apartments and the Oaks Business Park, as shown on the map. For the zoning here, it's Helmo Station PUD, which specifies several different land uses, including high-density multifamily on the southern half of the site, as well as flex uses, medium-density and medium-density flex uses, and office on the northern half of the site as well. As a part of the Helmo Station PUD, specific performance criteria is specified for each parcel. Here, the applicant is proposing a 280-unit apartment building, a 112-unit townhome development, and a 2.83-acre public park. The housing is planned to be market rate and is not income-restricted. To proceed, the developer must receive approval from the city on the preliminary plat, Plan Unit Development Amendment, or PUD amendment, in the site plan. A PUD amendment is required due to the development layout being different from the original layout of the Helmo Station PUD. These differences will be shown in a few slides. A concept plan was previously considered by the City Council at a council workshop on July 23, 2024. During this meeting, the council voiced majority support for the concept plan. Here we can see a general site plan for the proposed development. As you can see, 112 units are located just north of Third Street. The placement of the townhomes in this location is intended to provide more of a lower transitional density closer to the Oak Run Shores neighborhood. On the southeast end is a 280-unit apartment building. To promote walkability, the parking of the apartment building is located to the east so that it's not visible from the station area for anyone using the Goldline BRT service. Additionally, a secondary entrance, as well as a walkout, walkout units are located on the west side of the building to improve pedestrian access. The proposed public park is also located on the southwest end of the site, just west of the apartment building. Here we have a comparison of the site layout in the original Helmo Station PUD and the proposal by the developer. To make it easier to see, I'll switch to a close-up of the affected area of the original PUD layout in just a moment. The important points to note here are that the developer proposal does dramatically reduce the number of public roads on site. Staff was initially concerned with the impact of the loss of the planned public roads on traffic and walkability. However, staff requested that the developer complete a traffic study, which found that the development itself and the loss of planned public roads would have minimal impacts on traffic. Additionally, to address walkability, the developer has added an enhanced pedestrian spine, or also a walkway, along the west side of the apartment building, as well as additional pedestrian paths throughout the townhome development. Furthermore, in exchange for flexibility from the city for the site layout, the developer is proposing a park that is 47% larger than the original park in the Helmo Station layout. Here we have the closer look at the comparison of the site layouts. As you can see, the developer has increased the size of the park while removing most of the new public streets. Please note that the design of the park is still underway. All plans for the park are shown here throughout the project and in the site layout and included in the meeting packet. Much of the park design will be completed collaboratively with the city and the developer if the project is approved. As a result, staff suggests that input here tonight focus on the apartments, townhomes, and the site as a whole. Now on screen is the preliminary plat for Enclave Helmo Station. I've added approximate red lines to help highlight the exact lot dimensions. Here, the developer is proposing two blocks, Block 1 to the north, which has one numbered lot and would house the townhomes, and Block 2 to the south, which has two numbered lots for the park and the apartment building. The final plat is not yet ready, as there remains some title work for the developer to complete. A few corrections are needed here on the preliminary plat based on the city's ordinance. For one, the proposed public park is currently shown as a numbered lot. Typically numbered lots in Oakdale are reserved for private buildable lots, so the developer will want to change this to show as an outlot in a future revision. Additionally, the developer will need to ensure that public access easements cover any internal sidewalks for the development and determine if any of the existing easements on the site right now need to be vacated. Additionally, for stormwater, the developer will need to receive separate approvals and permits from the two watershed districts that serve this site, including Washington-Ramsey Watershed District and South Washington Watershed District. Moving on to the site plan approval, here we have a close-up of the site plan for the townhomes. We can see the 112 units, which are served by two accesses off of Third Street. A sidewalk is shown on the north side of Third Street, as well as on the south side of Fourth Street. In exchange for a PUD amendment and the flexibility for the site layout and potentially other deviation requests, staff is requiring that the developer extend the Fourth Street sidewalk to Ideal Avenue, which is to the east, in order to better complete the Helmo Station pedestrian network and support the city's bicycle and pedestrian plan. In the Helmo Station PUD, buildings along Fourth Street are required to be at least 30 feet from the curb line to allow for additional spacing from Oak Run Shores. Based on the plan, this requirement is met. It should be noted that in the Helmo Station PUD, buildings fronting public streets are required to have entrances facing the street. In the original site plan, the developer did not show any of the townhomes along Third or Fourth Street as having street-facing entrances, instead with rear patios facing the street. Since then, the townhomes facing Third Street have been adjusted on the site plan, which was included in the packets and shown on screen, to have pedestrian entrances facing the street, but the entrances to the Fourth Street townhomes still need to be updated to show that. Parking for the townhomes in the Helmo Station PUD is restricted to a maximum of two spaces per unit, which is met here. Continuing with the site plans, here we have the plans for the apartment building. The 280-unit apartment building is shown with one access off of Third Street and a special pedestrian spine on the west side between the building and the park. Parking is shown primarily as underground with two entries, with some surface parking provided on site to the east as well. It should be noted that the developer is currently proposing more parking than is allowed for the maximum parking ratio of 1.5 spaces per unit for high-density uses in the Helmo Station PUD. The PUD requires that no more than 393 spaces be provided for this level of units, and the developer here is proposing 469, which is 76 more than allowed. As a result, the developer will need to either comply with the maximum parking ratio or request a deviation to exceed it. Alternatively, the developer can provide the city proof of parking for any spaces that exceed the minimum, the maximum allowed, showing that those spaces could be added at a later date if issues arrive. Additionally, the Helmo Station PUD requires that buildings be setback no more than 10 feet from sidewalks. As a result, this is not currently met, and the developer will need to either revise the plan to show them as being no more than 10 feet from the sidewalk, or request a deviation from the PUD. Other elements that were not provided within the apartment building plan set include providing information on trash handling, we'll just need a bit more information there, screening and locations for trash and utilities, an updated photometric plan that complies with city lighting standards, and a comprehensive sign package for any development signage. Also, given the apartment's distance to Interstate 94, a noise variance with a noise study will be needed at a later date. Here's a closer look at the park site plan. As a reminder, tonight's hearing is directed more towards the residential component of the project and the project as a whole. Generally, staff is supportive of this park, though a number of improvements are necessary, including reducing the size of the pond feature to allow for other amenities, improving the entryway, adding a central gathering space, as well as a playground. Additionally, in the original park design, a very large parking lot was shown of about 40 spaces, which staff did not support. However, the new design doesn't show any parking lot, so generally, staff feels that, as well as the city's parks consultant, SRF, that a lot of about 5 to 10 spaces would be ideal for this site. As the project progresses, staff and the city's park consultant, SRF, will continue to refine the design. Moving back to the townhomes, the following images show some example elevations of the townhome designs. The left design shows the townhomes with a back patio at the rear, whereas the right design shows the townhomes fronting Third Street, which have a pedestrian-oriented entrance, as well as a rear garage entrance. As a reminder, staff will require that the developer update the plan to show the townhomes along Fourth Street with street-oriented entrances, similar to that of the right design. One issue identified here in the renderings is the material breakdown. As a reminder, the Helmo Station PUD requires that buildings be made up of at least 70% Class 1 materials, as identified in Article 18 of the zoning ordinance. Based on analysis by HKGI, the city's planning consultant, the townhome building types vary from being 20% Class 1 materials to 46%. Given this discrepancy, the developer will need to either update the building materials to meet this requirement, or request an additional PUD deviation. One possible approach here could be to increase the amount of Class 1 materials visible from the public streets and right-of-way, such that the interior townhomes could remain under that 70% requirement. Additionally, this could be done for more visible facades as well. With regard to the apartment building, this slide and the next display elevation renderings to give a better idea of the building appearance. Here we see the west side alongside its proximity to the park, some walkout units and park Here we see the east side of the building, a portion of the surface parking lot is visible, as well as amenity spaces for residents and various architectural features. Here we have a detailed breakdown of the exterior building standards. The developer states that 79% of building materials are Class 1. However, it should be noted here that the colored concrete masonry is not considered a Class 1 material under the city's ordinance. Additionally, corrugated metal is shown here as Class 1, but is typically not considered a superior metal, which is the wording used in the ordinance. As a result, staff recommends that the developer share detailed manufacturer information on the corrugated metal to ensure that it can be considered a long-lasting, high-quality Class 1 material. Generally, the developer will need to update the building to meet that 70% Class 1 material requirement, or request a PUD deviation from the requirement. One option we've seen in similar developments in the area is to have the developer focus Class 1 materials along the ground floor, with Class 2 materials located on floors above that are less easily visible. As a reminder, with each PUD deviation that is chosen to be requested, an explanation of the reasoning and the resulting public benefit should be provided. So to conclude, staff is recommending approval of the PUD amendment, preliminary plat, and site plan, as detailed in the staff report on file. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the following conditions. For the preliminary plat, approval will be required of an amendment to the Helmo Station PUD to allow for deviations to the land use framework, exterior building materials, parking, and setbacks, execution of a development agreement, approval of the site civil plans for the water sewer and storm sewer system, a public access easement shall be recorded for any publicly accessible sidewalks located on the private property. The plan should be updated to show the sidewalk on the south side of Fourth Street extending to Ideal Avenue North to better complete the Helmo Station pedestrian network. The plan should be updated for the sidewalk on the north side of Third Street extending to Helmo Avenue North to better complete the network as well. Vacate any unnecessary existing easements, satisfaction of park dedication requirements, including conveyance of the public park property to the city, and permits and approvals must be obtained from all applicable outside government agencies, and proof of approvals must be provided to the city. Moving on to conditions for the site plan, we're requiring that approval be issued for an amendment to the Helmo Station PUD again for the deviations to the land use framework, building materials, parking, and setbacks, execution of a development agreement, revising the site plan to show the locations of any exterior trash enclosures and their methods of screening, revising the site plan to show any rooftop equipment, ground-level utilities, and external loading areas and their methods of screening, updating the plans to show the sidewalk on the south side of Fourth Street extending to Ideal, as well as having the Third Street sidewalk extending to Helmo, update the apartment building plans to feature the architectural features for the ground floor to help differentiate it, as noted in Section CD 3 of the Helmo Station PUD, update the plans for the townhome development to include primary entrances facing the public right-of-way for townhomes fronting Third Street and Fourth Street, installation of a curb extension or bump out on Third Street North at the pedestrian crossing, obtaining approval from the City Council on a noise variance, approval of the site civil plans, approval from the Fire Department for the proposed hydrant locations and fire department connections, a photometric plan must be updated that complies with the city's lighting requirements, and submission of a signage package for council review. As a reminder, this is a public hearing tonight, and the developer is with us here in attendance. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions regarding this proposal.
Got one. As far as the fire department, with no road access on the west or south of that building, do they feel it's adequate for building that size with the access that they have at the north and east side?
Mr. Vice Chair, that would be correct. We did run it by our fire chief, and the pedestrian spine would actually be built to allow fire trucks to drive on it and rated for that, so that they would be able to access that side of the building.
So far, my only concern with this is not a problem with the townhomes being in their apartments, it's the outside materials and the lack of Class 1. And how to get there? Yes, you said they could come to you and ask for forgiveness or ordinance or a variance of it, but when does that happen? How does it happen?
So we'll be taking an extended period between the Planning Commission now and the first meeting in November, given how many things need to be corrected in the plans. So we're hoping to work it out during that session, and we would hope likely for either fully 70% Class 1 materials, or something where the most visible components of the building show that from the outside.
And that goes along with the Fourth Street side of the townhomes showing primary entrances as well?
Yes, that's something we would look to require. And for reference, we have, with the Norhart development, we did something similar, where we required the ground floor to be 70% Class 1, whereas the rest of the floors are primarily EFS, which is a Class 2 material.
So you're asking for approval of this based upon hoping to have that done, correct?
Yes, we are seeing it as a condition, so we would not approve it without the conditions met.
So basically, you came a little too soon, but you're going to extend it on the other end?
Yeah, we're going to allow a little bit more time. We have had plenty of developments in the past before where we feel that it's meeting the general land use goals, but there's still details that need to be worked out with some of those components, like materials.
So our motions will be subject to all these conditions?
But you're asking for it to be, to allow for deviations to the land use framework, exterior building materials, parking, setbacks, as example, you're asking for that already prior to my concerns of it having, not having it done?
Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner. Right now, if you take a look at the narrative component in the packet, they only requested it for the layout, so we would need those formal deviation requests worked out in the next month. We would expect those likely in the next week, and the City Council would have the final say to say, yes, these conditions have been met, we can go forward with approving
But what do we, this is where I get confused. We're approving something that may happen, but you're saying it's going to happen.
So with-
Am I saying that right, or wrong?
So with the conditions, the idea behind those is that it, the approval is not valid unless they are met.
Well, basically, he's brought it a little too soon.
Yeah.
But because our meeting is today, he's going to extend it until the City Council, because the City Council's already approved it, sort of, and we're just kind of-
They're going to allow for the deviations?
Yeah, we're just going to say, subject to, I understand, you're angst, and I have the same angst.
That's my issue.
Yeah, I have the same angst, but that's the way they're presenting it to us, so it is what it is.
And I do believe the developer as well would be able to speak to some of those deviations and perhaps provide clarity.
Good evening. My name is Josh McKinney with Measure Group. I'm here representing the developer on Click Companies tonight. Brian Bachman, who is with on Click Companies, couldn't make it tonight, he had some family issues, so I can speak to a couple of the items. But first, I would just like to say, you know, we completely understand the importance of this area and this particular development, and relative to the success of the Helmo Station area plan, like, we're a major component of this as part of this development, so we don't take that responsibility lightly, excuse me. And I also would just say, you know, we've worked really closely with staff and are coordinating kind of with the adjacent developments for, you know, how that park works and some other things, and making sure that our development kind of works architecturally as well with the Norhart development. And so specifically to architecture, it is, I mean, we got the HKGI report relative to some of these percentages and some deviations relatively, I mean, a couple days ago, really. So it's our impression that we'll be able to meet the 70% on the building without, with kind of some minor modifications. I think there's some misunderstandings relative to the architectural metals and kind of what we were putting on the building versus their review, and the same things with this concrete block. So we will hit the 70% minimum on the multifamily building itself, and then we'll work with, kind of, to kind of work through the HKGI and city comments relative to the townhomes. Townhomes themselves are a little bit tricky relative to the application of the ordinance on the 70%. We've got a relatively, you know, we're trying to go for a more residential look on this and less of a commercial, you know, look, but the Class 0 materials, in terms of what they're stated in the ordinance, aren't necessarily that more residential look. So we'll have to come up with some sort of medium, or kind of, like as Max mentioned, you know, even on the first level, kind of meeting some architectural standard that's set with the city, and then kind of come to some sort of agreement relative to the city's ordinance and ours. So if there's a deviation, it's going to be on the townhomes and not on the main building. I just want to be super upfront of kind of what our strategy would be. We do have our architect, Colin Cos, from Cos Wilson here, if you have specific questions on the architecture. But I just want to be transparent with what our, kind of, our plan would be. would be moving forward here. You happen to stand for any other questions, but just note that, you know, we're, we will continue to work with, with the planning staff to kind of address these items on the conditions of approval, and then hope to listen tonight between, you know, your comments and the public's comments as well, and see if there's anything else we need to change between now and council.
Do you see any problem getting the main entrances on the townhomes that face Fourth Street to be primary and not back?
So we actually specifically left those off for this, this response, and it's a discussion that we need to have, and maybe would be interested in your opinion, frankly, too, as planning commissioners. So right now, the way the Helmo Station PUD is written is that, that thirty-foot buffer, or the thirty-foot setback that was, that Max had mentioned, on the, the north side of our townhomes, was intended to be kind of a landscape buffer to, as another kind of layer of protection between us and the adjacent development to the north. And so, you know, we're really planting that up with a whole bunch of trees and shrubs and that kind of thing. And so we can, we can put sidewalks, you know, to the sidewalk that we're building on the north side of, or the south side of Fourth, rather, but it's really kind of, what are we looking for? Are we looking for a buffer that is kind of a, a break between this development and, and, you know, the existing development? Are we looking for, you know, the front doors to kind of front onto Fourth? I think those are two kind of different feelings in terms of how that development wants to be, or, and really, my concern is, and the, kind of the discussion internally has been, you know, I don't want to do half. I don't want to, going to go halfway with one of those. I don't want to do a, do a sidewalk that's sort of good, or like that front entrance feeling that's halfway, so to speak. And I also don't want to go half with a, with a, a buffer, because if we start to do a landscape buffer with sidewalks penetrating it, we kind of get into some secured, or more safety and security issues of, you know, people being able to hide behind trees and that kind of thing. So we're happy to work with, with you and city staff. That's not the problem at all, it was more of a, a point of discussion of like, is this really what we want here? Let's take a second and examine it.
I would like to see the primary entrances on Fourth. You've turned it over onto Third.
Yeah.
The buffer, whether you put buffers there or not, you could have that hiding behind a bush aspect if I saw that.
Sure.
But that would be an issue for me.
Okay.
Is there a, on the multi-building, first floor differential between the first floor and the above floors architecturally as well supposed to be distinctive?
You know, I, I might actually call Colin up to speak about just kind of some architecture. I, I do believe that there's been some special here. If you want to pull up-
I don't think it's showing that, and correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Could we get the PowerPoint up on screen?
So this building, I think we were, or that 78% was Class I that we submitted, I think it's, will end up right in that, you know, in that area. It's just a matter of kind of how those materials are applied, so we're happy to work with city staff that way, too.
So I thought there was supposed to be a requirement of, between the lower floor to the upper floors, a distinctive separation of materials or look?
We can look into that with staff.
Okay.
When do you plan on starting this project?
This would be a, a spring start.
Spring start.
Yeah. We, we recognize there's a lot of engineering work we need to do still, the watershed, you know, that process on this particular deal. The other piece that was not talked about tonight, but I just, I think it's valuable, is that there's a whole bunch of Met Council work that's occurring in the area to the south of this project. So we've worked closely with the Met Council, too, of making sure that this project wouldn't impact theirs and vice versa, and even, you know, going to the degree of, you know, looking at a, revising some construction easements to make sure we kind of, they can use the, the future park as a laydown area and so on and so forth. So we're, we think we're making progress that way and kind of trying to be as nice of a neighbor as we can while trying to make progress in the spring, so.
I guess back to Max, I, I wonder why we haven't here now, if they're not going to start this project until next spring, they have time to actually get all this information correct without us saying subject to ordinances. I know there's a 60-day rule, and if they would have waited one more month, they probably would have had all this stuff done.
Yeah, and I can speak to that, too, of why, why we're here tonight. I mean, so there was, and frankly, there still is, if we can get our financing lined up, there's an opportunity for us to start construction on the townhome portion of this project yet this fall. It's going to take kind of all, you know, everything to go right to do that. I just want to be super clear that, you know, we're trying to get that done, but I don't want to promise you that, hey, we're digging foundations in the fall on the townhomes. That's the goal, is like to give a, preserve the option for that to happen, and so that's why you're here tonight.
So you're here tonight because you want to be able to hopefully start through financing at the townhome portion?
Correct.
But you just told her you're, you're going to start in the spring.
The spring is, the spring started on the, is on the main building.
Okay.
Yeah.
The apartment building.
Correct.
The townhomes, the ones that you want to start.
Yeah.
I see.
Other questions for the-
Want to make a comment? Development is super complex, so, so many players, so sometimes you line up things and they don't sort of jive, so I do understand.
Yeah. And I would say, you know, we're looking, I'll, I'll take a seat and let the public comment, and if they have any questions that you'd like me to address, please let me know. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to open up the meeting to the public comment section for this proposal. Please keep your comments to about two minutes. And we are now open. Second chance, anybody have any comments? The public comment section is now closed.
I'm sorry, there was one other question that you guys had, or Max had regarding trash, and I just, I wrote it down, and I wanted to make sure I addressed it. So the, the trash for these buildings are actually located, the trash for the townhomes are like individual bins that will be in people's garages, just like a typical, you know, home. The trash for the multifamily building will actually be in the basement, and then there's, on both, on both ramps that people go down, there's, there's a place right outside the garage that essentially they'll be brought out on trash day, and then the trash company will take it from them. So that, it's been addressed, it wasn't clearly in the narrative, but we'll get that cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just have a hard time with, with everything saying allow for deviations from required exterior building materials. I know that you're going to work with it, but I don't know what we're agreeing to. That's my issue. I said, we're asked to agree to something that we don't know, and you come to us to, for this, seems like we're, like you say, we're very early in the process, and so I'm, I'm not as comfortable with this as we have in, in past projects with this.
Mr. Commissioner, if I may, generally, we would look to make sure that these conditions are fully satisfied, and if there is anything that the Planning Commission would like to add or recommend to add to ensure that we can meet any concerns that you do have, we would be happy to take that from you as well, if there's something you feel that we aren't sufficiently addressing through these conditions.
Well, you are addressing them real well, and I get that, and everything, your narrative was real good, it's just that everything, we get down to the ordinance and to the resolutions are all stating, allow for deviations. You're talking about it in the front end, but the back end, we're going to allow for, have an opportunity to allow for it, and that's what I'm afraid of. So that's just my opinion of this. That's all I got.
And I guess, in the end, the city council will be the final say on it, which they always are, and they have had review on this beforehand in a, in a meeting with, with people, so they're just trying to get this to go through, obviously, and I, it's, it's messy, it's very messy.
Yeah, it is.
I agree with you there, but it is what it is.
Makes you wonder what we're here for.
Yeah, I guess we're, that's what we're here for. We're bodies to-
Okay, do I have a motion on the enclave plan unit development?
Which one are you taking, what are you doing first?
Three different motions.
There's three of them.
Could I get a motion on the amendment to the Helmo Station PUD?
Subject to conditions.
Conditions.
I will make a motion to recommend approval of the PUD amendment to the Helmo Station PUD, subject to conditions as stated.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Could I get another motion?
I will make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the enclave Helmo Station, subject to conditions as stated.
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye. Okay.
Are you opposing or not?
I'm opposing.
Oh, you're opposing?
I'm opposing it, yes.
Okay.
I will make a motion to recommend approval of the site plan on the enclave Helmo Station, subject to the conditions as stated.
Second again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's pass. And now, any staff liaisons on updates?
Yeah, so not too much for tonight. We will look to have a Planning Commission meeting next month. We don't have any land use applications for that one. We didn't receive any applications within the deadline, but we are looking to bring back the comprehensive zoning update project to get additional input from you, so we can help structure that to take a look at some of the residential zoning, commercial, and see if the direction in which we've started to draft it is matching up with what you'd like to see for the city. With that, I'd be happy to take any additional questions, though.
Any questions for Max?
No.
All right. Any commissioner updates?
No.
Would our council liaison like to make any updates with us?
Absolutely not. He never does.
Thank you for the discussion on that. I have nothing, but if you have questions, be happy to at least try to answer them.
Got nothing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourn.